Wheel and excavator.
Yeah.
Do we have a budget number for, I mean, of course, we won't be out any money until it gets here, and it probably won't be here till probably October 1st.
At least, yeah.
You did say that Brett was gonna honor the original bid.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which Cheryl has it on file.
Mr. Auditor, if we, can we go ahead and enter into the, I guess we'll have to get lease documents to bring back next time to enter to it, entertain it, or to initiate it?
Except to, yeah.
And since we won't have any payments, do we, will we need to go ahead and do some kind of budget authority for that lease, since we probably won't get the equipment this year?
Are you gonna create another department?
It'll be, well, I think we're gonna do it, but split between the four precincts, aren't we? And that's what we decided it's gonna have to be.
Yeah.
Because the four precincts have to pay for it, so it'll be a line item in the four precincts.
I think in the budget process, we need to talk about that, because I was throwing out last time, I was doing some kind of internal service fund, and all the expenses related to apartments go to that, and then we do a charge to all the different precincts.
All of it.
And to be determined, basically, because if you've got the work crew working more percent in one precinct than in the other, it seems like it'd be logical that precinct pays more for it.
The goal will be to make it equally between all four.
Well, I think the question for today is, can we legally go ahead and order equipment?
Under a lease?
Under a lease. I don't know that we could do it today, but we come back last, next time.
Well, we'll have to come back next time with a lease. We'll have to get the lease documents to approve.
And then do it, and of course, Daniel might have to give his blessing, but do the lease to where it's really not effective till October the 1st. But, you know, they want to order equipment now, but it not be delivered till October the 1st, and yet have it ordered. That's what we're trying to get around.
It's gonna take sixty, ninety days, isn't what they said, to get the equipment in?
Yeah.
So we're getting up on that timeframe in July, August, September, ninety days, and we're at July 1st nearly, so.
Yeah, as long as that didn't violate any of the rules in our purchasing manuals or anything like that, then that should be fine.
Okay, so can we, can we all agree that we're gonna go ahead and get lease documents for next time, put it on the agenda, approve the lease? In between now and then, y'all can work out what we're gonna have to do to make it legal to approve that lease?
Yes.
Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
May I ask this in reference to salaries and stuff like that, where we talk about that?
In budget.
In budget?
Yeah.
Cool.
We'll budget it for next year. We won't, the equipment won't be here ready to go until next year anyway. So then we'll budget the lease payments next year, and the employees and all next, for next year's budget.
The only strange part about that is that we'll have to make the lease subject to be approval of this year's budget, but that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Well, just, we need to get through the loopholes of.
I would say that if we need to just get through that loophole, just put it in the capital project, it's a line item, just until we get to next year, and then we can turn around and make the adjustment to make it fit and work.
Once the lease becomes effective?
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
We can do that.
Y'all okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Steve, if you can get with vendors and get leases prepared for the next meeting in July, and then we'll get those approved, and get it ordered, and figure it out between now and then.
And this will be through, I mean, Cheryl being involved in this also, so we can.
Yeah, I think.
She's got all the documents already anyway. I just, I had them emailed to me and to her.
Okay.
Okay, so no action on that at this time. Action item number two, the final plat of King Craft and Delia, I guess, Estates in Precinct 3. Philip, did they ever get that information to us?
No, so they haven't got it. I talked to them yesterday, and advised them that I was gonna take it off of the agenda, table it or whatever I have to. They're working with the highway department supposedly, but I don't think they've been working very hard. So I would like to table it.
Well, we can't table it again, can we?
No, you can just put it on the agenda whenever it's ready.
Yeah, so we'll just remove it, we'll just strike it from this agenda, and once they get it ready, they can resubmit it. New business, consent calendar. Commissioners, you got the consent calendar in front of you? Entertain a motion of approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion of any items? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, resolution extending and/or modifying the April 28th, 2020 COVID-19-related resolution in social distancing guidelines to prevent the spread of COVID-19.
This is basically reusing what we did for the past six meetings. The only difference on this one is that, I gave you two of them. The only difference is this one is for three weeks instead of two weeks, because our next meeting is in three weeks. But there's not anything different in this version than in the last four.
So we're still just extending the emergencies all we're doing?
That's right.
Commissioners, entertain a motion for the approval of action item number one?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number two, resolution of the Commissioners' Court of Hunt County, Texas granting aid to disaster victims who have contacted COVID-19 and increasing total amount to $50,000.
About a month and a half ago, or maybe two months ago, we approved a $25,000 amount to go in $5,000 tranches to FISH for administration for helping out with daily expenses, including mortgage or rent and electricity and other expenses like that for COVID-positive patients, so that they wouldn't feel the need to leave their house to work, as a lot of the people who are catching it don't have savings and basically live hand-to-mouth. And so there was a recognized spread problem with people who were breaking quarantine and leaving their houses anyway because they couldn't afford not to. And so the government code allows the county, in that type of situation, if there's an emergency, to grant some monies toward disaster victims. And so this is exactly the same as what we did last time around with 25,000. All this does is grant another 25,000 to make the total 50. As of a couple of days ago, about 14,000 of that had been spent. And so the idea was to wait and come back to court when that money ran out. However, as you've all seen, the numbers have spiked quite a bit lately, especially over the past couple of weeks. And three weeks from now, the expectation is that the first 25 will already be completely expended. And so this gives a little bit of cushion. It still works the same way, where to get the additional $5,000 tranches, Mr. Jeffers at FISH just needs to send in a request for that and then do monthly accountings, which he's been doing. So he'll send in, right now, we have a mailing list that includes the county judge's office and my office for those accountings. And we get those to the auditor as well. Basically, everything appears to be working well with that, and all the expenses have been accounted for the way that we expected. So all this really does is add an additional $25,000.
Daniel, I think I understand this right, is we're not just giving each family or person so much money. We're actually, or FISH is actually getting the bills from the individuals and then paying the bill directly. Is that correct?
Well, it's, every item is a little bit different. And it's not just an amount of money that goes to each person. It's $2,000 per, for affected persons, whether they're infected with COVID or not, because it can be other people in the family who can't go to work because their whole house is quarantined. And so basically, when Mr. Jeffers gets a request for assistance, he gets the actual bill, he confirms that the bill is real, and then, if possible, he pays it directly to the provider or the landlord.
Landlord, yeah.
But sometimes that's not possible. Sometimes they won't allow them to do that. And so he makes judgment calls and sometimes says, no, we can't pay this unless we can pay it directly. Other times, if it's a well-known vendor or a landlord with an apartment complex or something, he can work through other ways, but always gets proof of payment. So we know, based on his administration, that the money isn't just going directly to the affected people, it's being paid to the people who are gonna cut off services if they don't get it.
They're just not handing out the money, and it's like.
Exactly.
They're making sure it's going where it's intended.
As an auditor, could I ask, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Just a question. I'm looking at our financials, and we show, and Stacy, you correct me if I'm wrong, but we've only had a request for $5,000.
Yeah, they've already extended themselves, they've been advancing money themselves.
Okay.
And I think they've advanced 8,800 so far, and they've got 6,000 more requested.
Okay.
So they need us to go ahead and advance, you know, another 10 to cover that, and then ask for an additional five. And so that's getting us up to the 20, and that's why I requested we put it on this time, because with three weeks and the number of cases going up, I don't have to call a special meeting to come back in here to get additional money. So we still got the provision. The auditors and myself have to approve all of this before we put out any more money to them. So, and we're doing it at $5,000 increments. So I think we're well protected. I just don't, I don't want to get somebody in a bind in three weeks and have to call a special meeting.
The other question I would have is, you know, we had 542,000 of COVID money.
Right.
We have 517 in the big account, of which 186,000 shows to be left. Do we want to take it from that and move it into that one where we have the COVID, FISH account, which we had 25,000 and originally had changed that to 50,000?
Yes. I think, I think that's the way to handle it.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify.
So what did you say? We've already spent how much of that?
He's only requested 5,000.
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. The COVID money. We got 517 in, and we.
The COVID money showed we spent 309,000 yearly expenditure with 21,000 covered with 186,000 left.
And those are numbers we know that we can prove up, not questionable.
A lot of that 309 has a lot of the courtroom expenditure already in there.
Right.
Well, just to be clear on that question, all the regulations haven't really been written yet.
No, I know, but we, assumingly, I'm sorry.
Yeah, almost certainly, we can prove that up.
The way it appears, all of those are gonna be eligible for reimbursement, so.
They should be. There's a lot of very complicated issues that have come out, because the state wants to make sure a lot of that goes to salaries, and a lot of that hadn't gone to salaries. So we're gonna have to look at all the new regulations that have been coming out just over the past week.
Okay.
And figure that out. But it's all being spent on COVID-related stuff.
Yes, sir.
The question is on our accounting, whether it's eligible for reimbursement.
Okay. Any other questions? Not, I entertain a motion approval of action item number two?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number three, second and third quarter reports for the Hunt County CRC. Y'all have that, those reports in your packet. I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number four, the completion and submission of the LESO Law Enforcement Support Office application, Alan Gier. I guess he's not here.
No.
Do we know what this is?
May I, may I, may I say something in reference to this?
Sure.
Basically, you know that SWAT vehicle that we have down there? This is involving the SWAT vehicle to go on and continue the agreement in reference to it. Also, what rifles and stuff like that. This is a yearly-type situation. The one thing I did.
Is that that big vehicle we got from the military?
Yes. One thing that I did advise him, you know, last year, if I'm not mistaken, we had 10 weapons that were given to Swats and all that bit. And they were talking about rifles in reference to this, possibly giving them back to it. And I said, I wouldn't do that. If I were you, I would keep them. So I would like to include that, that, those AR-15s that were there are kept with, as we have it right now with the county. So this is, this is required that we do this submission in order to keep all that stuff. And I do feel like we need to make a motion in reference to allowing this to go on and take place on this application.
So is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, in motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The GMA and Texan rental agreements for the county's use for jury selection. Commissioners, the district courts, Kelly Akins, the administrative judge, has written a guideline for reopening the courts, intended to be set for August 1st. The spring court has ruled they cannot have jury trials until August 1st, cannot hold any trials in person until August 1st, which may change with the current situation. But in selecting the jury, we usually send out 500 notices, of which usually 250 or so show up. We have to social distance. The only two places in town, the only place in town that we think we can house the initial jury is the GMA. And so we secured a agreement with the city of Greenville to use the GMA every Monday and starting, I think, the third Monday of August, because they're not gonna be able, GMA was already booked the first two Mondays, so it'll be the start, and I think the third Monday of August through the remainder of the year, except for holiday weeks. And in the Texan, when they pick the jury, the way they're gonna do it now going forward, they're gonna try to make sure they always have two court juries. They normally have one court doing a jury a week now, but because of this, they're not gonna do two. So they're gonna put multiple cases up between the county court laws, and they hope the county court law will have one every Monday. But if not, the district judges are gonna have a backup jury trial that won't require the number of jurors to select from. So they're gonna move that smaller jury pool from the GMA. Once they get everybody qualified, they're gonna move those to the Texan theater, so then they can continue the selection to get the juries picked that they need. And they're also, if the JP courts, the JPs have all agreed, if they're gonna have a jury trial or need a jury trial, they're gonna conduct them all here at Judge Money or Linden's courtroom. And this jury pool will send the required number of qualified jurors to them to pick a jury out of that same day's call for jurors. So it's gonna be a little bit of a planning mechanism for a while, but this is the only solution that we could come up with. So I, Daniel, did we decide the Texan agreements, okay, that?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, I'd.
May I ask this?
Absolutely.
This right here, this will go under the COVID thing also, that we might be able to get reimbursed.
Yeah, with the same understanding as the other part. I mean, we, I mean, we should have access to several million dollars under that. And the only thing that's at issue is, I mean, obviously, these are COVID-related expenditures, but it's not clear whether they're gonna be reimbursable under the Texas version of the CARES Act regulations, which are ever-changing and not clear. I would feel very confident that this is one that will be reimbursed. It's just a question of whether we meet the appropriation metrics, where they have, you know, 70% for salaries, 30% for other stuff, that sort of thing. That's gonna be the issue.
I'll make a motion we approve of action item number five.
Second.
Got a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number six, the request to lower the speed limit on County Road Cedar Oaks Trail and Red Oak Trail from 35 miles an hour to maximum reasonable improvement speed of 25 miles an hour, effective when appropriate signs are installed in Precinct 3. Commissioner Martin?
Your Honor, I want to thank Dan and Ray, and for them looking up and reference this, allowing this to possibly be done in reference to maximum reasonable improvement speeds on county roads. We have to mention the, the road itself, it's a 20-foot wide pavement. Basically, it's winding to, to real short corners, and then it goes into the second county road. They're highly populated, and I want to tell you something. The dogs are riding around in carriages like babies. Basically, younger people do a lot of walking, also older people. I make a motion that we set the maximum reasonable improvement speed on these two county roads at 25 miles an hour. I believe that I have met all the, that would be on County Road Cedar Oaks Trail and Red Cedar Trail. And it was at 35, but it's just too fast. That is a motion.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number seven, naming a private driveway, Heartland Drive, Heartland Drive due to the total of three addresses using the same drive entrance. Drive is off County Road 2526. Randy Straight?
I'll make a motion we approve that. I think we've done that on some other long driveways or something with multiple addresses.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number eight, upgrade of approximately .23 miles, 1,214.4 feet of County Road 3614 in Precinct 3 from rock to oil sand.
Your Honor, what I'm doing is using the laws that have been in effect since I don't know when in reference to an upgrade at the cost of the county commissioner from his budget. This is .23 miles, which is 1,214.4 feet. It's 3614, there's not a house on it, but it's one of two, in which the other one goes through the city of Hockos. It connects 751 to one of the main arteries of North Shore. And that's why that I'm wanting to do this upgrade as such. I make a motion that you allow this upgrade to take place.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number nine, the upgrade of approximately 300 feet of County Road 4804 from dirt to rock, Precinct 4.
Make a motion to approve 300 feet upgrade from dirt to rock on County Road 4804, the money's in escrow.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 10, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities to cross County Road 2668 in Precinct 2.
I'll make a motion that we approve this through FEC under normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 11, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities which will cross Cattle Creek Road, Precinct 3, Farmers Electric Cooperative.
I make a motion we allow this construction with the normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 12, the replat of lots 14 and 15 in Cattle Ranch Estates in Precinct 3.
Commissioners, what I have is I have a replat of a final plat, 1415 Cattle Ranch Estates, which is existing, has been existing probably 20 to 30 years. What they've done is they've combined these two lots into one. Now, if you look at the plat, the only difference is this, and this whole subdivision has existed this long, if you'll notice, it's not a, it's a 10-foot easement for utilities on the front and on the back, and which I have no problem with that. Normally, it's 15 and 15, but that's the reason it was done. I've been told that if the Commissioners' Court did not, you know, desired to have it 15 as such, they would do so and bring new malords to it. But I myself am, have no problem with this. If y'all will, if you have any questions, please ask, and I'll ask Brian to come up, and maybe he can answer anything.
Did we advertise this?
Yes.
Supposed to have a hearing.
Do we need to have a public hearing then?
It was on the.
It was in the front of our packet.
Well, we need to have a public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, we need to, that's what I'm saying, we need to have a public hearing before we make a motion to vote. That was the question. Okay, at this time, I'll open action item number 12, the replat of lots 14 and 15 in Cattle Ranch Estates to public comments. If anybody's can call in or put a phone number, we can call you back or send a message. Brian, have you got any comments for or against?
Brian has taken this from the information of the court. Basically, the correction notice, notice of application, replat 1415, this has gone through the planning and twofold planning zoning board, in which they also have asked us to consider, and they all recommend, in fact, we have papers in relation to that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
If there are no comments, we'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion for approval, action item number 12.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 13, the final plat of Marabella in Precinct 1.
I would make a motion that we approve this plat with stipulation, ending the submission of the construction plans from Hickman Engineering.
The plans have been reviewed by.
The plans have been reviewed.
And they're accepted by our engineers. We just don't have the copies of them.
The construction plans.
The final, the final approved copies. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under.
Well, we need to do the public comment.
Okay.
There's one person who emailed in, and I'm not sure if he wants us to call or not, or I can read his email.
Okay.
I was planning on gonna, I was gonna try to give him a call first, and then if he didn't.
And then we'll, so if you get them, then we'll open up the public comment. I guess at this time, we will accept public testimony. If anybody else wants to reach out on our website, either with a comment or a telephone number where we can call you back. You're welcome to speak to the court and/or have any comments heard.
Are you calling?
Yeah.
I'm gonna put it into the speaker system.
It's Bluetooth to his system, and then you'll be able to hear it in here, and I'll have it on speakerphone if not.
Got to load technology.
I don't know. We're stuck with it.
Hello? It went to voicemail, so I can just read the comments?
Sure.
Okay, this is an email. Actually, this one should have been read last time, but I missed it because it came in in May, and I didn't go down to May for the first June meeting. But it's from a man named Sean Hannah, and it says, "Good afternoon. With property taxes increasing annual with no end in sight, I have a few questions I would like to address. Number one, what is our current surplus for the county? Number two, with taxes going up, therefore revenue increasing, why has the volunteer fire department not received more funding as opposed to them pushing an ESD? They've not received an annual increase in their budget in over 15 years. Why is that? Number three, since the appraisal district is claiming they are playing catch-up with appraisals, why hasn't the tax rate decreased to help offset the rising costs for one to own a home? Thanks, Sean Hannah."
So. Isn't that the one I talked to? Yeah, he called the office last week, I believe it was, last week, and I spoke to him, and I think I cleared up most of those questions for him.
Okay. That was the.
I hope I did. I tried, real hard. I think I had a good conversation.
Well, and this email's from a while ago, so.
Yeah, we had a good conversation. I think he's, I think he was satisfied with the answers you got.
Okay.
If not, he's welcome to call me back.
That's the only comment?
Okay, so go back, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under items.
1, 2, 4, and 8.
1, 2, 4, and 8. Hear motion?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor say aye. For an executive session. For an executive session. For an executive session. For an executive session. He might need to... He might need to... He might need to...